Good evening and welcome to the April 13th, 2015 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 9th, 2015 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mamud?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky? Ms. Santifante?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dudda? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Wesson? And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a call.
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have correspondence as is listed in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Once a month, we spend some time spotlighting the wonderful things that are happening throughout the district, and tonight, we have with us some students from Autton Road Intermediate School. It's actually the Aris Goes Green Club. Tonight, they'll be presenting on the club's initiative to promote and educate students and staff to create a green community in school. I'd now like to introduce the principal of Aris, Mr. Chris Carey, who will introduce the advisors and the students. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. President Kins, members of the board of ed and administration, thank you very much for having us this evening. Yes, I'm very excited to place a spotlight on one of our student clubs. Each year, we have about 20 clubs that we offer to our students, and one club in particular, I wanted to take some time to just share a little, have them share with you what they're doing at Autton Road. I'm so thrilled to have them here, and before I forget, I want to thank all of our parents for bringing the students this evening. We appreciate your support, and we're going to have each student introduce themselves so they don't get a chance to talk in the microphone and be on TV all that often, so they're going to do that. They have a couple posters they're going to share. Before I go any further, I do want to acknowledge, of course, the advisors for the Autton Road Goes Green Club. We have Ms. Nancy Patrick and Ms. Donna Bitoff. Ms. Donna Bitoff could not be here this evening, but we certainly were happy to have Ms. Patrick with us. Before I hand the microphone off to Ms. Patrick, I do want to mention that at a faculty meeting early in the year, when we knew the Autton Road Goes Green Club was going to take place, and of course, the boys and girls made that possible, and of course, with our advisors, I mentioned at a faculty meeting, and the entire faculty got to their feet and gave a round of applause to our two advisors for the efforts that they're going to put forward to make a difference not only on Autton Road, but create habits that are going to take place in their community and hopefully spread out, out and around. So, without any further delay, I'm going to introduce Ms. Nancy Patrick. She'll tell you a little about the Autton Road Goes Green Club, and then we'll have the students introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy Patrick, and before I go any further, I'd like to thank Mr. Carey for all his support, and our two wonderful janitors, Tyrone Robertson and Ms. Anna, for their tireless support and dedication to this program. Bill Nye once said, "If you want grownups to recycle, just tell the kids the importance of recycling, and they'll be all over it." That's how this club was actually born. The kids became very concerned with the amount of water bottles being thrown out every single day by both students and other faculty members. So, this became a club mission for these kids to work on the water bottles. So, educating and informing students and faculty alike has been their absolute mission with this club. So, I'd like to thank all the parents and all the children for coming out every month or so to meet with us and go green. But the kids would like to introduce themselves to you, so this is a wonderful group of kids that did work tirelessly throughout the year. So, come on up, guys.
Amira Beasley.
Fiona Crossman.
Sabrina Farrell.
Grace McQ.
Sierra Scala.
Olivia Tyndall.
Samantha Fedeck.
Lavanda Mori.
William Tang.
Alexandra Klein.
We have a little presentation for you and some posters made by the students.
Did you know about 50 billion water bottles are used each year? And 1,500 water bottles are used per second. Lastly, 80% of water bottles end up in landfills.
We're having a little bit of crazy difficulty. Would you possibly read the slides to you?
Our goal is to influence others by taking, take action about recycling. We started as a school club just last year in 2013 through 14. Now, we plan to get the whole community in taking care of our earth.
Role models. To start with, San Francisco was the first city in the world to put green bins in school cafeterias. Now, more than 85% of city schools participate in San Francisco Environment's Food to Flowers Lunchroom Composting Program. This TeachersKids.com composting and recycling can, and recycling help protect nature and the environment. Every year, San Francisco Environment presents an Environmental Excellence Award to four local schools that have excelled with composting and recycling at school.
Interesting rules about recycling. Starting soon in Seattle, Washington, people will be fined for throwing away food scraps because the city wants them to compost. The fine will be small, only a dollar, the second time they throw away more than 10% food scraps that could be composted or recycled. We think this is a good idea because this means that people in our country are taking action to recycle and compost more.
What we did, we decided to plan recycling bins in the hallways and in the homerooms, labeling them plastic only to make sure that students don't put garbage in the bin. When the bins in the homerooms get full, a green rep would empty into the hallways containers. From there on, the custodian would put the recycling in the back of the school where Somerset County Recycling Center would come and pick it up. We also were selling Earth Day bracelets that would be sold for $2. These color-changing bracelets are a signal of raising awareness for recycling.
Our goals for the future, the biggest goal that we have is to someday start a compost pile in the back of the school. That might be still some years away, though. Some other goals that we have are to have separate recycling bins for, for paper and plastic. We also hope to change the styrofoam trays in the lunchroom because styrofoam takes one mil, and plus million years to decompose. If one kid bought lunch every day if, of the year, they would have thrown away about 360 trays by the time they left Aris, which would take about 360 years to com, decompose.
Did you know that about 35 billion plastic wattle bottles are ye, here are thrown away in the US? And approximately 500 billion plastic bottles are used annually worldwide. And plastics are estimated to account for 8% of the world's oil production. Over 40% of plastic usage is used in packaging. Over 250 species known to, are known to have ingested or become tangled in plastic, and a 2002 UN study estimated $7 trillion a year of economic risk from plastic pollution.
And this is the hard work this club's been doing all year, researching and learning all about how to make the world a better place, and as adults, we're leaving the world to them, the earth, and it's very important to them to become involved in it. That's it.
Thank you so much. You did such a wonderful job. It's great to see that our students are actually making a difference and making our planet greener every day. Very nice job. Let's give them another big round of applause. And at this time, Mr. Kins, I ask for a brief recess so that the board can congratulate and thank our students and their families for coming out today.
Absolutely. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
Just a few other items that I'd like to share with the board and with the public, some wonderful news to share with all of you. I'm pleased to announce that coaches Cheryl Ione and Todd Soodle from the Hillsborough High School were inducted into the New Jersey Scholastic Coaches Association Hall of Fame for the class of 2015. Cheryl coaches girls softball and girls volleyball, and Todd coaches boys swimming and girls swimming, boys volleyball and girls volleyball. I am thrilled that the hard work and dedication of these coaches has been recognized by the association. Congratulations to Cheryl and Todd. Hillsborough Elementary School's puzzle-solving whiz and reading specialist, Carrie Crosky, was a contestant on Wheel of Fortune last week on April 9th. Carrie made HES students and staff proud by winning two puzzles, although she didn't make it to the final round. Way to go, Carrie. You are definitely an HES star. Let's give her a big round of applause. Congratulations also goes out to the Hillsborough Middle School Musical Theater troops, cast and crew of Guys and Dolls for an amazing opening night on Friday, April 10th. All the students and staff and jo, staff involved did a phenomenal job. The show continued this weekend, will continue this weekend with shows at Hillsborough Middle School set for Friday, April 17th, and Saturday, April 18th at 7:00 PM. It's definitely a show that shouldn't be missed. Congratulations to all of those involved in the middle school Guys and Dolls presentation. The grand staff ensemble made up of Hillsborough's staff and friends will hold its annual spring concert on Tuesday, April 14th at 7:00 PM at Autton Road Intermediate School. All are invited, and all proceeds from the concert will be awarded to a Hillsborough High School senior who is planning on pursuing a degree in music. Lastly, NJFamily.com recently ranked the township of Hillsborough among the top 100 towns for families in New Jersey. Out of more than 500 municipalities listed, Hillsborough is ranked as the 96th best town for families in the state of New Jersey by New Jersey Family Magazine. In ranking towns, NJ Family measured each municipality against a number of factors, including school district quality, crime rates, affordability, commuting times, and access to hospital and general lifestyle factors. Hillsborough is a really great place to live, and it's nice to be recognized as a wonderful place to raise our children. Let's give ourselves a big round of applause. We're a wonderful job. One last note before we go. Tomorrow, we will be hosting 90 other educators from across the state and region who will be looking at our one-to-one initiative. This is the second year that we're inviting districts across the state to see the work that's going on here in Hillsborough. We look forward to a great day tomorrow. We have guest speakers, we have student panels, both at the high school and the middle school, and our guests will be observing how technology is integrated effectively throughout the district. So, that should be a lot of fun tomorrow. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Continuing on with the agenda, we have meeting minutes, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the February 23rd, 2015 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a revision.
What's that? One revision? Okay. As revised.
As amended.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Motion passes. We have a committee report. The Governance Committee met last week, April 6th, and on that, we reviewed the district's strategic plan, what the next steps are, and we are recommending, the committee recommended to the administration to arrange for presentation on strategic planning proposals for professional facilitators at the next governance meeting. This would be to start engaging on the strategic plan process in the upcoming year, which then would be implemented the following year. We had a review on the ESIP with recommendations from the administration. The committee affirmed the recommendations of the administration on the ESIP project, and then there are two bylaws which are up for first reading later on in the, in the action agenda. The first one is on board self-evaluation, and so the adjustments, there was a revision in the law which makes self-evaluations by boards or among the board optional. The Governance Committee recommended to, to continue the process and the practice of performing self-evaluations so that we can use that for going there. So, you'll see that for first reading. The second, the second proposal, or I'm sorry, policy that's up for first reading is on board officers, and on there, there was a change in the law which, which could allow for secret ballot in terms of electing the president and vice president, or to continue on with the voice vote. It was the recommendation of the, of the Governance Committee to continue with the voice vote process, and so you'll see that reflected in the first reading of that, of that policy. And then, and then we had some informational, information on what the upcoming committee meeting agenda were, just so that we can help facilitate the cross-committee knowledge sharing and, and communication. So, that was the Governance Committee from last week. Okay. Continuing on with the agenda, we have public input on the 2015-16 budget, so again, this is an opportunity for the public to, to weigh in on the, on the budget, which the board will act on at the next meeting two weeks from now, which will be the final budget. So, I'd like to, if anybody has any input that they'd like to provide to the board with regard to the 2015-16 budget, now is your time. I thought there was going to be someone. If you can just state your name and address, please, for the record. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm very tall. My name is Connor McKenna. I live at 39 UMO Road. So, I'm talking on behalf of the theater department at the high school. My current role in the theater department is I am VP of Administration for the Hillsborough High School Theater Council. I am a current senior at the high school, and I love everything about Hillsborough, about the township, about the school, very nice community. But I've lived, I've lived here my whole life, and theater has always been a big part of my life. My father was a director and is still a director, and very inspiring to me, and from the very beginning, I, I wanted to grow, and I wanted to enhance my, enhance my knowledge of everything, either on stage or offstage, letting people know how I feel, and I think that's so key about art and, and theater in general, is letting people know how you feel and letting people be impacted by everything, because we're all impacted every day. But I, I also go to Somerset County VOTC, and I'm in their theater department there. So, I'm very involved in theater. I've, I've done shows at the high school for the past four years. I've worked for the, I've worked in the theater department at the high school for a while because my, my brother was involved, and my sister was involved, my dad was even in a show there, so that was pretty cool. But I think that it's very awesome that we have a great program. But I'm here to talk about a few different things, so a few aspects of Hillsborough High School Theater that may, maybe some people don't know. Being on the theater council, we have chances to vote. We have our own constitution that we all came up with, we all wrote together. It states every rule that we have to follow and for years to come. No matter what, no matter what happens, we have a consti, we have a constitution written out, we voted on it, and that's a great thing, and we all, we all have our own say. We're, we're, we are our own people, and, which is great to see. But one awesome thing that we get to do, we get fun, we get to do fundraisers that are so, so great because we have to raise all the money for our theater department, and, and so our opening night concerts, it is always great because it's, I think, third or fourth year in a row that we've had this concert, and we bring professionals in, in from New York and from surrounding areas in New Jersey, and they come and perform. And I have gotten the chance to perform with these professionals last, beginning of this year, and I think it's so great. Me, I want to pursue theater, and I'm, I'm hoping to pursue it at either King University or Ramapo University in New Jersey, and being able to hear these stories of these actors just their whole lives and all the work that they put into it is great, and a lot of people don't see that because when you come to the show, you see these wonderful actors and singers, and it's, it's truly inspiring to me and for, I imagine, everybody who comes to see these, see the shows in general. I think seeing young people up there and really, really loving what they do, I think it's inspiring to me and being able to, to be on that stage and be able to express everything that I love to do and, and, and really, really live for everything, and these, this is the time to live. High school is a time to live, and I think we kind of forget that. These years are the time to really take in and really learn, and I, I've truly learned so much over these past four years, and a quote I have is, "A good director creates an environment which gives the actor the encouragement to fly." And needless to say, that's what I've learned, and I've learned from a great director. Not trying to push that, but I've learned from a great director, and no matter what happens, my, my love, my, my family that I've created will last throughout the years, and I, I can't, I can't give that up, and it's great. And another aspect that, that I forgot to mention was, we build our own sets. We don't have, sometimes we have professionals come in to build our own sets, but that's mostly either student-driven. Every week, we have to do either three hours or two hours of set build per show. So, if you're in the cast or crew, you have to do these set, set hours, either making props or building the sets, and I have learned to become a handyman because I've, I've had the chance to build some of these fantastic sets that you've seen on the stage, and, and I've learned how to use chop saw, I've learned how to drill some awesome, drill some big boxes together, and I'm learning so much, and it's so great that I have the opportunity now to, I'm, I was a Boy Scout, but not anymore, and I learned all those things in the theater department, which is awesome. But I, I think that what I've learned is most key, is mostly key, and I think that everyone should understand the reason and, and understand the support behind everything, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. McKenna?
My name is Mike Riley. I live at 790 Route 206. I have a question for the high school board of ed rep. Will you go to prom with me?
Well played. I think that's, I think that's a first for, for Hillsborough Board meetings.
Do you know that guy? I know, yeah. Judy, is that the first? Is that a first? Absolutely.
So, I don't know how to top that. I don't have any flowers. I'm also, I should have brought flowers for you guys. No, I'm also, I'm a member of HHS Theater. My name is Mike DiLorenzo. You all know me by now, but I'm a stage manager at the high school, and I also want to educate you guys about what HHS Theater really involves, because we have been talking a lot about it, but we haven't really talked about what we do, and I, we kind of just assumed you guys know what we're talking about. So, I want to like talk to you a little bit more about what we do and talk a little further what Connor said. So, he mentioned fundraising. We do a lot of fundraising events to provide for our shows, but those fundraising events at the same time also involve the community. One of the events that we did this fall was the murder mystery dinner. It was the second time that we did this, where we get local businesses to donate food, and we do a live murder mystery type event where actors from the high school pretend to be characters, and people are murdered throughout the night, so it's like part show, part dinner. So, that was the second year we did this. Both years, we sold out and had a waiting list that exceeded our capacity, like doubled. So, we had 300 people come, and we had over 300 people on a waiting list both years. So, that was really great to see everyone come out and support us. We also did Hillsborough's Got Talent for the first time this winter, where everyone from Hillsborough, no matter what their age, we had children from elementary schools all the way up to the Hillsborough Rockettes who were in their older years, and showed their talent on the Hillsborough stage, so that brought the community together as well, also fundraising for our cause. And we also do the acting clinics, acting clinics for children, which really isn't a fundraiser, but it's a community outreach thing in which elementary kids and all the way up to Autton Road and the middle school come to the high school on a Saturday morning, the Saturday morning of our fall and spring shows, and the students actually teach them different aspects of theater, such as like improv and dancing and music and a lot of different aspects that they may not have known already, so we educate them, and they also get a ticket to come see our show that afternoon, so they also get to see our show, and they also get a backstage tour of what the set looks like for that show, so it's also a great way to involve the community. We're also coming up to the end of the year, and the end of the year is also the time for Hillsborough Shorts, which is five student-directed plays which are offered at the high school, so it's when people like me and other people who are here tonight direct their own, direct and produce their own small plays on their own through guidance of our director. So, we pick the cast, we have auditions, we have our own rehearsals, we have our own production staff for every show. We talk to the line designer, we talk to all these people, and make our own dreams come to life, which is unique to Hillsborough. There's no other theater department to my knowledge in the, in the state or in the area that offers that to its students, and it's unique because if you want to pursue a career in theater, you can get a taste for what it feels like. I produced my own last year and realized the challenges that directing your own short comes with. I may have grained some gray hair through that process, but it was all worthwhile in the end. And lastly, I just want to talk about the roles in HHS Theater that get students involved. As Connor mentioned, he's the vice president for the council, so we do have our own theater council. We also have a production stage manager for every show, which is what I have been recently. There's also- There's also some other production staff members, stage managers, assistant directors, assistant producers, assistant choreographers, student lighting designers and set building, which gives students the opportunity to explore those different fields of the production if they don't get into the show or if they just love working behind the scenes to get it all happen. So these roles are really important to the whole production and also teach different like leadership skills and other important skills that are not found in a classroom or in a textbook. So I think they're very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiLorenzo.
My name is Carol Corvet. I reside at 406 Ernest Drive and I know you've seen me before. I'm here once again for the HHS Theater Department and I just wanted to say I'm one of the parent volunteers who works with the HHS Theater Productions and Staff, Production Staff and Students. The HHS Theater Student Council wanted to share all of the areas that this program provides to the community. Because of our talented students, they are able to compete in the Montclair State University Foxy Award Theater Night and Paper Mill Playhouse's Rising Star Awards. Since 2009, we have received nominations in West Side Story, three nominations and we had one winner. The Phantom of the Opera, nine nominations and one winner. Men Morphosis, three nominations, one winner. Titanic the Musical, four nominations, one winner. Moon Over Buffalo, one nomination. A Christmas Carol, six nominations. Disney's Beauty and the Beast, four nominations. Fiddler on the Roof, six nominations, one winner. Peter Pan, three nominations. And we will be informed in early May of any nominations that we may have received for cats. Our productions of The Phantom of the Opera and Fiddler on the Roof were recognized by the Paper Mill Playhouse's Rising Star Awards as being one of the top 10 high school productions in New Jersey in 2011 and 2014. The American High School Theater Festival has named the HHS Theater Program as one of the top 40 high school theater programs in 2013 and 2014. We have several students who will be attending the Fringe Festival in Edinburgh, Scotland during the summer. As you know, according to the federal No Child Left Behind Act, the visual and performing arts are considered a core subject. This requires that all teachers are highly qualified in the core academic content areas they teach. State licensure in the area taught is the first requirement for a highly qualified status. No Child Left Behind Act places major emphasis upon teacher quality as a factor in improving achievement for all students. This emphasis grows out of the research showing that teachers' mastery of the academic content they teach is critical to engaging students. They also talk about English teacher qualifications and that no English teachers cannot teach theater courses for arts credits. English teachers may use the literature of the theater within the context of language, arts, literacy instruction. The artistic director for next season will be kept busy and continuing to maintain the same first-class quality of entertainment that is provided to our community. Thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public input on the 2015-16 budget? Okay, I'll open it up now for comments from the public with regard either to new business or the action agenda. Okay, seeing none. I'd like to move over to the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve the submittal of the safety application grant, the revision to the policies for second reading, policy 5112 entrance age, as well as approve professional travel, the HIB investigation list, and approve the out-of-district placement. We also have two additional, well, one additional motion with two parts to it. This is a motion to approve overnight trips. We do have it on the, on the shelf there for the public if you wish to see it, but I'll read it to you now. To approve the overnight trips as follows. The school is the high school. The group or team is robotics. The destination is St. Louis, Missouri, and the dates are April 21st through the 26th. That's the first one. The second one is the Penn Relays. This is also from the high school track and field team. The destination is the University of Pennsylvania. That's from the 22nd, April 22nd through the 24th. We just received notification not that long ago that the robotics team qualified for Nationals and that our track and field team qualified for the Penn Relays. And that's why I asked for the board to consider these, these motions as an addendum.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A6 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Actually, I'd like to separate out item A2. So this is for items A1 and A3 through A6. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure.
Mr. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item A2 of the action agenda. Do I have a second? Second. Okay, I'll, okay, I'll just take the lead. The A2 is a motion for a policy for entrance age and this is actually one area that the board actually has flexibility on where we define it. It's not mandated by the state. So the only requirements are that the entrance age for kindergarten or for transitional primary or first grade occurs, I believe, October 1st or later or it's there. So different school districts have December 31st, December 1st. And while I think that, at least for me personally, I'd like to recognize that a calendar age is not necessarily reflective of a child's developmental age, emotional age, or their physical position. And I feel that the October 1st cutoff date is actually too early. And I'd like to, I would, I personally would like to see a later cutoff date. I know that there are, there are kids who are more advanced and if, you know, if it's, you know, October 31st, 15th, even in December, I would be comfortable if a kid, if a parent felt that their kid was ready and they were shown to be ready, that they can enter at that, at those later, and having that later cutoff date. So I just wanted to express what my, my position was while I'll be voting against this. And I apologize that I missed, I just missed it when we, when we had up for first reading and that I, that I missed the education committee where I didn't have an opportunity to express my opinion in that forum. So that's just, that's my position there. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Actually, I have a slightly different opinion. I would like to see if possible the start dates be moved to September 1st. I don't think if that would, if that would be allowable or possible. I, I don't see the reason why four-year-olds come into our district as kindergartens. I would, if I had to take a guess, I would say maybe 100% of children born in September wind up going to transitional primary, so automatic 14 years of school here instead of 13. I, I don't, and I would move it all the way to July 1st, to tell you the truth, about five months opposite of Mr. Kins if possible. Because I just think too many kids in this district, where we still have TP, too many children born July, August and September wind up being shutted to TP. When really, what I've said all along, I've been saying this for eight years, if you were too young, emotionally immature for, to go to first grade after kindergarten, you were probably too immature to go to kindergarten when, at that age. You should have stayed another year. So that's my, that's my opinion.
Mrs. Haas?
The October 1st date has been the policy of the school district for at least 25 years that I know of and probably longer. And it appears that most of the districts in the state use that date. I'm not quite sure why, but it's been, you know, the date that people have selected, which is not to say that both of you don't have good ideas about that. But for whatever it's worth, that has been the policy of the district for a very, very long time. And it's also been a, an absolute policy of the district. You know, unless somebody comes from another school district, which is kind of hard to do before kindergarten, but unless you come from another school district where you've successfully completed the exact kindergarten requirements that we have, you know, that is the cutoff date. Doesn't matter how big you are, how smart you are, how mature you are, that's the cutoff date. So, I mean, it might be something we might look into in the future, particularly if we have new standards for kindergarten, but at the moment, you know, it's what we've always done.
Just one other thing, if I could, so just as if I haven't emphasized it enough, the one thing that makes our district different than 99% of all the other districts is the TP program and the number of children that we somehow deem not ready for first grade, 15 to 20% or whatever it was when we last had the report, I don't know, five years ago now or more. So that, that's what makes it so, Judy, October 1st date, that's great. And I know that almost every school district uses that date. October 1st, we use it too, but we're different than every other district. If we didn't have transitional primary, I would probably recommend stay with October 1st. And I couldn't see moving to, with all due respect, Mr. Kins, I couldn't see moving to Mr. Kins' idea of a later date while still keeping transitional primary in place because even if parents thought their kids were ready, someone who is, you know, four years and eight months starting in school, I don't, I think they would 110% certain that we place them in transitional primary.
Well, or not, because then, or not, because then your standard changes.
No, we would never change the standard.
The average level of maturity would be different if the kids were all younger.
But I don't think, I don't think, when we, when we heard this report before, five, six years ago, we were told there is no average level of maturity business. That is a standard that remains in place. We don't, we don't fill seats in, supposedly.
Well, we've cut, we've cut down the number of TP classes and the number of students in them, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Mr. Kins? I'm only going in a few minutes on this, only because I don't know what I'm talking about, but from a, from a layperson's point of view who hasn't sat in on these meetings or been here for five years, but I have been lucky to be able to be exposed to some different types of daycare. In fact, in our own town, we have a company, and I won't name them because it's not the place, but they teach to a different, they teach to an EQ as opposed to an IQ. And I think one of the things that we just alluded to was their maturity, which is more than what we need to weigh in on than worrying about can they do the work? So that brings me to my conclusion that I don't feel that we always have to have a cookie cutter approach. And if there's some way that you all can agree on a date, that's fine with me because I'll count on your expertise. But I think there's got to be some room for give and take. If a parent shows up and has one of these children that came from one of these programs for the last two and a half years and they're learning about oceans and they're learning about music and learning how to interact with other children and now to respect their elders and work with others in a team, if that can be proven, why should a date be the cutoff? I think in that case, we should be able to have some kind of leeway. I don't know, maybe we already do. Judy, we need some leeway. Because as, as a parent moving into town and I enrolled my child in this expensive program and it's, I would be upset if I couldn't get them into a program here if, if they qualified or more than qualified. And maybe we can set up some sort of metric where we have somebody that can find out if they qualify. Not taking the parent's word for it, obviously, but did I sound as unintelligent as I could?
No, no. I, I think, I think you're right. Some things to remember about how this fits in, in my, from my point of view, it ties in with transitional primary. Other board members might not feel that this date ties in with that at all. I think it does because I believe that children born later in the year, July, August, September, they're a preponderance of whatever I'm trying to say. You know what I'm trying to say. More of those children are slated for transitional primary. But what I wanted to say, Stephen, you might not be as up on this as the rest of us are, that our transitional primary program is absolutely not to do with educational ability and knowledge at all. So that might actually work to what, to what you're saying. It's only to do with emotional maturity thing. Yeah.
Well, that's what I was saying is if...
No, it's, it's not anything to do with...
We need a, we need a less than cookie cutter approach sometimes so that if there's an exception out there, I hate to tell a parent, no. I really do.
Dr. Schiff?
There is a mechanism for a child that, that is young but goes to a private K that, as, as Mrs. Haas indicated, that if they fulfill the requirements of a regular K program, and that's something that Dr. Antunes would approve, then the child can go into first grade here. And what this policy does is it restricts that child from going to transitional primary. So that's the change to this particular policy that the board is acting on tonight for second reading.
I think it's going to become more of the norm than less. I think as we move ahead, people are getting younger. And we're having, not to overplay my hand, but the Masters Champion, 21, we have high school kids going into college who'll be playing in the pros. Every, every facet of our society is getting younger and younger, doing things that older people were doing. And I think we got, we have brighter, smarter kids coming up than we ever had before. And here in Hillsborough, we've done a really good job of dialing them in on the electronic side of it. And I think we should be able to take advantage of that if it's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay.
I'm tired.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure.
Yeah, this is for A2.
I'm exhausted.
Mr. Santafonte?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion passes.
Oh, it's four, I'm sorry.
All right. Motion passes, continuing on with the action agenda.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making in the area of human resources to approve the retirements of Julie Hasser, who's a teacher of math at the high school, who's been with us since 2001. Karen Lieberman, a reach teacher at Woods Road School, has been with us since 1992. Martha Vaccaro, a secretary with the child study team, who's been with us since 1990. And Peggy Valente, who had worked in the district from 2007 to 2010 and returned this year and will be retiring at the end of the year. Approve the revised leaves of absence as listed, the revised long-term substitutes, approve the contract changes and leaves of absences. Approve the appointments of the long-term sub, secretary, volunteer coach, intramural advisor, mentors, substitutes, and student teachers. Also approve extra period coverage and, and approve the projected chaperone coverage.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B9 of the action agenda.
So moved.
So moved, okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Got you. Thanks.
Can I separate something?
Yeah.
Can I separate B 1.4?
B 1.4?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so this is for, any other separations? Okay, so this is for items B1 through B9 excluding B 1.4. I would like to just recognize and thank the Hillsborough Municipal Alliance for the Otten Road, for the ARIS IRun Intramural Club advisors, for the stipends for that. And we'll acknowledge that more formally in, in the operations. Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Mr. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd like to approve a motion for item B 1.4 of the action agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? No?
Motion passed.
I'd like to approve a motion for item B 1.4 of the action agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? No? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Mr. Santafonte?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Motion passes. Oh, wait, this is...
That's a personnel matter.
Personnel matter?
You, a board can't not accept the resignation or retirement.
Well, it fails, but realistically, she can retire, or it can't.
It's symbolic. It's a symbol.
Okay.
The motion fails, if Robert's rules, but she will.
Okay. So the, okay, so the motion fails based on...
Robert's rules.
Robert's rules and also our policy on voting. Because it's a personnel matter. But that doesn't mean that she's forcing, so. Okay.
Can't make her not retire.
Okay, continuing on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
I will tell her. Under, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly financials, line item transfers, resolution for a settlement agreement, and approve the bylaws for first reading on the board's self-evaluation and officers, as reported out of the governance committee, and accept the donation from the Otten Road Holman School Association to be used for the chime choir and coding clubs.
Okay, and I'm going to read from the deus also, under the motion to accept donation. Although we acknowledged it before, I think we need to formally announce it to add the municipal, Hillsborough Municipal Alliance for the I-Run Eris advisors donations, stipends of $3,000.
Very good.
Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C5, with C5 as amended at the deus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Mr. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion passes. Okay, that ends the action agenda. I'd like to open up the floor one last time for comments from the public. This could be with regard to old business, new business, informational budget. Okay, seeing none? Oh, all right. Say your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Donna Zidler, 20, that's too funny, I can't remember my address. Wyckoff Way. And I'm not very political, and I tend not to get involved in these kinds of things. I'm an IT person, not a talker. But my children have been involved in the theater program in Hillsborough since we moved here in 2010. We came from a school district in New York that had an excellent theater program. And my daughter, my older daughter, is going into 10th grade at the time and was delighted to come to this school and find quality in theater and musical program in general. And the way that the theater program involves the community is astounding. And the advisors work with the community, they work with the parents, and especially they work with the children. In particular, you know, I'm addressing the situation with BJ Solomon. It would be regretful if we did not recognize the resource that we have right now in Hillsborough by retaining him. Because once he's gone, he's gone. And to find someone else to fill those shoes, especially because it will get out that Hillsborough doesn't value this particular position. So someone may come in and accept the stipend that BJ has accepted all of this time. But more than likely, we're not going to get the quality because there's no potential for growth, there's no potential to maintain the person. And, you know, BJ has reached out to the younger children. My daughter Erin now is in the middle school. But she's been involved in Hillsborough High School Theater since she was in this school. And really recognizing the full scope, as Connor was explaining, about the full life lesson that these kids get in that theater program. It really undervalues and underestimates what the educational and social aspects are. The children grow and mature. The work ethic, the absolute amount of work these kids put in every day, every week, on weekends till late at night, is astounding. Plus, they still have to do their homework. That kind of dedication, you see in a lot of things like sports. Well, we seem to value sports because we're willing to put our dollars there. Why don't we value the arts as much? I, you know, as I said, I'm an IT person. I really hoped my kids would go into something they can get a job in. But guess what? That's not going to happen. They're going into theater. My older daughter is interested in lighting. She started out, she was Madame Geary in Phantom. And then she decided she no longer wanted to work the boards. She wanted to get behind a board. She was doing lighting and doing, you know, other things to support the theater program, but not acting on stage. My younger daughter Erin, she's in the theater program at the middle school, very much looking forward to working with BJ. And as are all of the other kids. We've got a host of eighth graders who are counting on being there in that program because they know what they're going to get out of it. So I would hope you would reconsider and find a way to support these kids and to show that all of the side benefits we get from having BJ in that position, that we actually value them. I guess that's all I really have to say.
Great, thank you very much. Any comments from the board? This could be from today, or new business, old business. Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, and Mrs. Haas?
I'd like to say that the reason I voted no on B 1.4 is that the board recently made some decisions and advised the administration to take some actions regarding the position of supervisor of fine and performing arts. And I would like to know what those decisions that we made and actions the administration took, what impact that had on this unexpected retirement. So I'm voting no. That's why I voted no on it, because I did not receive any... I mean, it's too much of a coincidence that three weeks ago, we made some decisions. I'm trying to say this without revealing anything, but you'll tell me if I... I made some decisions, advised the administration to take some action regarding not a person, regarding a position. But the person in that position retires, and we didn't hear anything from the administration about it. I just saw it on the agenda on Friday. I think it, it's too much of a coincidence to not think that it's at least somewhat related to the decisions we made. How can I go on as a board member and know that I'm continuing to make the right decisions? And one of the things I like to do as a board member is I like to have the best employees here all the time. I like to always be able to tell the public that we have the very best employees in each position. And I would hate to think that any decision that I made as an individual board member, or that we made as a board, or any action we advised the administration to take would lead to an unexpected retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
And I'd be happy if I knew something else to call for a vote, to take a re-vote, or whatever Robert's rules allow you to do.
What I can do, I think would be fair, is to share with the board the letter of resignation, which indicates reasons why. And I think that that is also typically, not just to me, but also to the board. And I can share that with the board.
Okay. Mrs. Haas?
I would just like to thank the Hillsborough Public Library. This past weekend, they had a club fair for all of the high school clubs where kids from middle school and even Otten Road could come in and sort of sample the high school clubs and do so in a very unintimidating environment. And I understand that it was very well attended. So I'd like to thank our librarians, Laura Mellor and Diane Valentine, who coordinated the program. And in relation to that, this is also National Library Week. So hug a school librarian this week, or hug a Hillsborough Public Library this week. Thank you very much.
Since I know my mother's been working at a library since I was 14, I hug her as much as I can. Number two, I wish to, as a comment, just to wish our two road warriors, the robotics team and our track. Which also is something that I was just reminded that 45 years ago, I was there at the Penn Relays.
Very nice.
I can't believe it's still going on. It's an amazing event, and 45 years later, I can remember it like I was there yesterday. So those kids earned for a treat.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay. And on that great note, informationalizes was in the attachments, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions? We're adjourned, thank you.